Can you guys hear me okay? Perfect. We've got four people here. Let's see, Andrew, if you'd like, we can get the pre-meeting started.
Yeah, let's go ahead and start.
Perfect. Rick won't be joining us. He's actually in an interview right now with for a another zoning enforcement officer, but he'll be joining us a little bit later.
Very good. And then everyone I'm sure has noted that the agenda changed. There was an item on there that had previously been approved back in October and that was taken off the agenda. Do we know if everybody's going to be in attendance? Do we have any idea yet?
That I don't know. Angela, do you know by chance? It looks like she's still trying to connect.
Oh, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Did we get a confirmation from? Anyone else whether or not they'd be here? And? I guess the answer is.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you. Did we get confirmation from anyone else? Angela?
No, Greg Bell's down here in the chambers.
Okay.
Um, are you planning on staying, Greg?
I gotta leave about 5:30, but I'll zoom in after.
Okay, yeah, he'll zoom in after 5:30.
Do you have? Do you have the screen up and everything for Zoom meeting down there?
Um, no, because Steve hasn't come down to set it up yet.
Oh, and he's on the phone right now. Okay, I'll send him down in just a moment. Greg, are you okay to sit tight or would you rather come up and join me until we get audio and video down there?
Greg, do you want to go? Do you mind? Okay, he'll just listen and I'll get it. I'm gonna try and set it up right now.
Okay.
All right. Has anybody had a chance to look at the minutes from last last meeting? Any comments on that?
Chair, I just had one question and I I don't know if it was just a. I think where it was highlighted in yellow, I think there was some confusion on. On Martha's part as well on page eight, that second paragraph. It just that that last sentence, it just states, once they start developing. Mr. Sanders would not proceed with it. And it's highlighted in yellow. And as I read through that paragraph, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to me. And so I wasn't sure if anybody else could kind of follow that one as well, or or maybe that's why she highlighted it.
Maybe for some further information or further input.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
I'm just kind of scanning it myself now. Yeah, I'm not clear on that either. My memory doesn't bring anything back at the moment. Anybody else?
I recall him saying that he would not proceed with it if it wasn't going to be in the county that and. That's all I recall, but I don't remember it being at that particular point in the discussion. And it looks like they talk about it. He brings it up maybe later and maybe he brought it up. There, because they talked about West Haven just before it. That's the gist of what I got from him, but I don't know if this is reflecting exactly what happened.
Well, it was a little bit choppy. I think Mr. Peterson was, I can't remember if we were having technical difficulties or. I know that a couple of times he's kind of stepped away while he, you know, after he thought he was done talking and then he kind of got drawn back into the conversation. So I don't know if that's if this was one of those moments or not.
Was this transcribed from the audio and then Marta goes through and fixes it? Is that kind of the idea?
That's usually how it works. Angela, are you doing the? Okay, is Marta doing the minutes? By audio right now for Western Weaver? Or is that you, Angela?
No, it's me. I'll be doing them until I retire.
It that almost sounds like a joke, but that's that's an honest.
Sorry, I'm trying to get this set up down here.
No worries.
So Andrew, I think what you're saying might have been right, that the audio missed a section of what he said. When he turned away and it came back and it sounded, and so that's why it sounds disjointed. So that might be actually what came through on the audio.
I think you're right.
Hang on, I'll be right back. I've got to change Bluetooth here. Something something's piled up on my end here. Sorry, I'll be right back.
So I think you're 100% right, though.
Walk amongst yourselves.
Was it was where he had stated that he wouldn't proceed with it if it wasn't. Being developed in the county, he wasn't doing, he wouldn't do it in West Haven, I think, is exactly where that goes.
Would we feel comfortable amending the minutes to say before that miss or after Mr. Sanders would not proceed with it if it was not in Weber County?
I would feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
That's how I recall it is. Going down.
That is his sentiment. I can't say for sure that he said it at this juncture in the meeting, but he. Does feel that way.
Yes, he does.
I remember that statement and I don't see it somewhere else, so I'd assume. That's where it is.
Would you like me to talk to Margaret tomorrow and make sure that's correct, even if you approved him tonight, just with that change?
Yeah, that would be great.
Would that be okay?
I kind of figured she had some confusion on us as well, where it was highlighted in there. So.
Yeah, so I'll I'll have her listen to that. And if we have to, we can we'll just quit. You can just if you want to approve them and then I'll let her know and she can fix that.
So should our motion be to approve them with the amendment that we assume happened and then she checks it? Or do we wait and have her check it? Or how do we proceed there with the the approving of the minutes?
I think I think it would be okay just to go ahead and approve it with the change on page eight.
Yeah, so you can do it that way.
Okay.
Yeah, just the motion could be just the correction on page eight. I think we're we're good just to leave that to their discretion.
Oh, we just say a correction on page eight and that's all we need to specify? Okay, great.
I'm back. Sorry about that. So what what was the conclusion? Did we get some more information on that?
I think, Chair, what we're gonna do is we can just approve the minutes and just Angela's gonna check with Marta tomorrow and. Have her re-listen to the audio, but. I think with what's Commissioner Wickern brought up about, you know, Val not wanting to develop it. If it's not in Weber County was the clarification, but we'll just make a motion to approve it with a correction on page eight.
Okay, very good. That'll work. Okay. Then the only other topic that we have today. Is. Is is about our substandard roads. Does anybody have any thoughts? Charlie, I guess I'll kind of let you you give us some, you know, some information leading up to our thoughts. Go ahead.
Okay, no worries. So I just barely hit send on email or back out to you guys on some amended language even beyond what you have in your packet. If you read over the memo, the structure of the memo and the. Information to members is still the same. So essentially, we're highlighting the three different. Policy perspectives that we went over in the joint work session with the county commission. The policy perspective number one is essentially leave the policy that's in county code alone and that policy being. No development along a substandard terminal road. Now, I am suggesting that we do still make a change to the code if that's the policy direction you guys want to go and recommend to the county commission. I'm recommending that we just amend the language so that's more clear than what the current code says. And so you'll you can see that in the the attachment that you have, and I've got a little bit of changes that I'll review with you in the meeting. And then item or option two was to do like we've been discussing over the last half year, which is essentially to allow the development to occur. Apply a covenant with the land that has a substandard road agreement in it. That essentially obligates each future lot owner to pony up their proportionate share of. Essentially rebuilding that road or or improving that road to a better standard in the future at a time unspecified. But that will be later specified by the county when we see the need. Along with that would also be a covenant that the lot, the new lot owners. In the new subdivision being proposed would not protest. If the if the county commission decided that they needed to create a special assessment area to raise the funds. And and it could be both the county commission could ask to call on the deferral agreement for a certain amount of money. And then apply a special assessment area for the other portion of the money. You know, it can be a mix and match to alleviate some of the. The shock factor that might occur for resulting landowners. And then policy option number three is to essentially create a another avenue. And that would be for the developer to essentially put. His proportionate share of improving that street into the road. At the time that he goes to develop his subdivision, either put it into the road or take the cost that he would otherwise put into the road. And and give it over to the county roads division for them to improve the street. For example, if his proportionate cost is essentially the equal to the value of. Adding a little bit of shoulder to both sides of the of the street, all the way back to the point that it's no longer a a single access road. Then it's probably better for the county roads crew to go ahead and do that as they go in for maybe a programmed overlay that would have otherwise occurred that year. But you know, if if that's not programmed into, you know, their their work for that year, maybe it's better for the developer to do it. So we would leave that up to the discretion of the county engineer to determine number one, which improvements are needed along that roadway. And then number two, whether or not it's the county that's going to do it or the developer that does it. But regardless, the developer would pay for it. In determining what is reasonable and proportionate for the developer to. Invest in that street. I've included a formula to to kind of create that. A fair assessment or calculation of how to go about doing this, and I could walk you through it, but just. The simple nuts and bolts of it is you you take the linear feet of the road segment that is not up to standard. From the the point that it becomes a single access road all the way to the subdivision. You multiply that by the cost per linear foot of improvements that are needed. To improve it to the full county standard. And then you divide that number by the lot width of the zone. What that'll do essentially is determine on a lot by lot basis at full buildout. How much money it would take per lot to improve that whole street segment to a full county standard. You can take that number then and apply it to the number of lots that the developers creating. Now, if the developer has some lots that are on that road, that's already included in that calculation, obviously, you would you would. Exclude that, but I've got a formula on the screen. I'll just kind of walk you through the math and just make sure you guys are comfortable with that. But what so what that would be is let's say it's a it's a million dollar improvement and half of the. Full buildout is the developer's fault, the developers creating a half of the full bill along that street. Well, then the developer would be responsible for putting up $500,000 to improve that street. And the county engineer would be able to take the design of an upgraded street. And decide which components of that design that $500,000 would go towards. It might go towards, you know, putting in guard rail because the street's a little more narrow and maybe the drainage stitches are a little deeper. Or or maybe it's going to go towards creating more shoulder or. Whatever is necessary and in doing that over time. Eventually, as as full buildout comes, we'll have almost a a street that's almost built to full county standard. And and I say almost because the only ones that would be left would be the 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 areas of the street or the. The proportionate cost of the street of existing. Lots that are there. And that would just essentially be the to make up that for the difference that would essentially just be a taxpayer expense because those landowners. Were already there. It's not their fault that a developer moved in down the road. So that's the intention of number three. You guys could today, you can recommend to the county commission option number one without two and three. You could recommend one and three, or you could recommend one, two and three, or just two. So you can mix and match a little bit. One is definitely needed. Option one is definitely needed. But if you also go with two and or three. Option number one, essentially two and three wave some of the requirements of number one, if that makes sense. So number one says you can't build along the street because it's substandard. Two and three would say, except when these certain things happen. Does that make sense? Hopefully that decomplicated a complicated subject, but if that just complicated it further, let me know.
Can I ask you a question, Charlie?
Please.
So the option is still available for the developer to just fade the full price of upgrading the substandard street.
Yes.
So if we chose option one, that wouldn't say you cannot develop there. It's just saying you've got to make sure it's a a standard street. And then it takes you out of that qualification. Okay.
Yeah, and the sticking point. So when you require a developer to provide improvements on behalf of the county or the public or whomever, that's it's it's an exaction. And the way that so there's an illegal exactions and there's legal exactions. An illegal exaction is. If the county were to require the developer to go above and beyond what's reasonable proportionate. Or to require the developer to install something that has nothing to do with the impact of his development. So when it comes to. When it comes to improving that entire length, it it may be possible that that entire length is his full responsibility. And we could provide a reasonable argument for what's roughly proportionate to require him to bring the whole thing up to standard. But. If it's if it's not proportionate to require that, we just got to be cautious about the way we say it. He needs to volunteer. Essentially, so we can't say you have to bring this road up to standard as an exaction. We just need to say you can't build along this road unless you volunteer to improve the road. And I know it's a little bit a little bit of sixes, but we just need to make sure when the developer comes back to sue us, we can we can say you volunteered for this. We didn't make you do this.
And that that makes that makes sense. That's great explanation. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Any other questions about it?
I do, Charlie. So so two and three, basically, though, one without two and three. Says that they have to do it at their cost regardless. There's no shared. There's nothing shared in this by other landowners as they develop or. Or other property owners at all. Is that right?
Well, that's true. The what isn't said there is the other options that might be available to the county and the developer. For example, but number one to emphasize what I think what you're asking. Yeah, that that wouldn't the the burden to improve that street wouldn't fall on the existing landowners. In in the future, unless, of course, the whole thing doesn't get improved and those those other landowners decided to develop themselves. But otherwise, it wouldn't fall, the burden wouldn't fall on those existing landowners. What isn't said. And and I would. Suggest that we don't say it. Is that the the county could always enter a pioneering agreement with the developer. Or or some similar type of instrument where if other landowners along that street do decide to develop. Because the the applicant that we're talking about invested in that whole street segment. The county could potentially put a pioneer agreement together that says that they can only develop. If they pay the county a certain amount of money, which the county then would owe to the original developer for his improvements along the roadway. And that's always been an option available to us. We don't do those very often, but we can.
And to that end, there's a timeframe, though, that has a limit to it, right? Like a seven year limit or something.
Yeah, well, we'll want to put a sunset clause on it. There's not a mandatory sunset for those kinds of agreements. But we don't want to be obligated to that particular developer forever. I mean, I'm sure that developer would love to be paid forever, but. We would want to have a clear cutoff date.
Right.
Isn't isn't there a 10 year maximum on? Pioneer agreements? They can't exceed 10 years?
Would that be under state code?
I believe so.
I'd have to look that up. I wouldn't recommend we go much longer than 10 years anyway. But yeah, I'll have to look that up.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can look it up.
Thanks, Matt.
Generally, there's seven years, right? But I I'm pretty sure that there's a state code that says you can't put a binary agreement on for over over 10.
You know, I I don't necessarily have a problem having a. Good heavens. I've lost. I've lost my tongue here. I apologize. Someone who's going to develop. I I don't necessarily have a problem with them paying, but at the same time. It it's as this area is building out in the way that it, you know, the accelerated rate that it's building out out. That building out at this point, it it doesn't seem. Exactly fair to throw all of that burden over onto the developer either, who we know in turn is going to throw that over on to the price of the lots. And we don't know how fairly that's going to be done as far as, you know, if if it's the if the cost is truly a just use a $10,000 per lot cost onto the. Amount of the lot, is he going to keep it at just the cost or is he going to, you know, exceed that? And and there's no, there's no governing that, and I'm not saying that we should govern that. It's just that it. It it opens that door for for that kind of a a thing to happen and and realizing always that it's buyer beware. But. I don't know. There's just such ambiguity ambiguity in in some of this that it it bothers me. I also don't like the fact that it could be a burden on on a tax district later on. Even though people that have, you know, bought their homes and and have agreed to that, have it come back and be. A known surprise later on. So I know this is all stuff that we've gone over several times in previous meetings, but. What's what's the thought? How how do you? How do you? How do you? How do you feel commissioners on 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 this?
Chair Ferro, I I have thought about this a lot and I still come back to. I like the way the code's written. I think there's wisdom in the way it is that we we're not saying developers can't develop. We're just trying to have a little bit more of an organic growth, and I think the speed of the growth is important in both ways. That means that if a developer really wants to develop a parcel of land, it will likely be available or be able to negotiate with other. Developers who maybe have land that's closer to the hub. To make it happen, you know, they might won't have to wait a decade, maybe till their land becomes more available. So. I'm still leaning towards the more organic growth and especially where we don't have the general plan done yet. I'd really like to see the general plan done. Before we start allowing the developers to drive where the streets are going rather than the community to make sure it's. Growing sustainably and that we're not burdening the taxpayers in any unnecessary ways. So that that's where I stand right now.
Thank you. Charlie, to that point, Commissioner Wickern's point. It it gave me a thought, and that is, so once we get through the general plan process, we could always go back and readdress this and adjust this.
Right. Yeah, and actually, so something you'll look at or something you'll see in the proposed language is that. In order to. Allow or essentially waive the no building at the end of a substandard road. The planning director and the and the county engineer has to be able to make a couple of findings. One of them is that. Not requiring that road to be improved or not requiring at least a secondary road, so it's no longer a sole access road in the area. Is not contrary to what is on a general plan or master transportation plan. And part of our general plan update is going to include a master transportation plan. So we may very well have those future streets or at least generally. Where they are located, drawn on a map. So when something comes down the road and and we see a dead end road, but we know we've got four or five streets branching off from it. You know, that might help us understand, all right, what what can we ask of the developer and versus what what can't we? And and how do we configure streets in the future so that we are following our plan?
Great. Okay, well, looking at the time, we'll, I think we'll go ahead and move this over to the meeting and and call to order. If I I think we'll where it's the only item, it's it's a good night to have this as as the only item we can, you know, we can have some time for input here. So with that, I'll call a meeting to order for Western Weaver Planning Commission. Welcome, everybody. Looks like it's few and and some chirping in the background, so. That's not the worst thing in in the world, I suppose, for tonight. Anyway, join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under.
God indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see, I'm looking at our at our screen here. It looks like we have. Two, three. Four, looks like we five, we have, we have five members available. And unless we are joined by Commissioner. By our other commissioners, I'll we'll go go ahead and say that we have a quorum, so we're we're good to go with our meeting. And we'll see what happens with with our with our other folks. They may join us. Let's see the minutes. We went through the minutes and I'll take a motion on the minutes with the. With the exception that we have or the question that we have on the highlighted area on, I believe it was page eight of the minutes. Is that correct?
Yes, Chair, if you're ready, I'll make a motion.
Go right ahead.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes as presented with the correction to page eight.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Do we need to do a roll call on this or can we do a?
Can you tell me who did the motion?
Commissioner Edwards did the motion and Commissioner Wickern seconded the motion.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passed unanimously. So we'll make that correction to those and and. Hopefully it'll make a little bit more sense on down the line. We were having a few technical difficulties during that that meeting, so no problems there. Then it looks like that'll bring us to our our next item, which is. Discussion decision on a on a proposal to amend the subdivision code to allow flexibility regarding development along a sun substandard, single access street. Charlie?
Hi, guys. First off, I wanted to apologize to the planning commissioners who were waiting in the waiting room. I apologize for. Not noticing that you were on the on the call and waiting to get in. Okay, so I wanted to walk you guys through the proposed ordinance before doing so. I wanted to kind of set up the the framework for the structure of how it is because it's a little complicated. We actually reviewed it today with the attorneys and with them. Uh I wanted to kind of set up the the framework for the structure of how it is, because it's a little complicated. We actually reviewed it today with the attorneys and with them. Uh our engineering division, just to make sure everyone's comfortable with it, and. I think the sentiment from everyone was, gosh, this is complicated. Why don't we just stick with our existing ordinance? Um but um we've got a request uh from the county commission to to think this through and and get them a a. Recommendation one way or the other. So I have emailed planning commissioners. I've emailed each of you the most recent version of the ordinance. I'm gonna share my screen. And uh. Get that so you can see it. Can you guys see the screen with the green text?
Yes.
Perfect. Bear with me for a second. I want to make sure I can. See both. Okay. So um let me kind of walk you through some of the changes really quickly. Um and then I'll we'll come back through with a little bit more detail. Uh so previously, what you saw. Uh for substandard roads, we're in section one oh six, which uh is our um subdivision chapter. Or excuse me, subdivision title, we're in chapter four um uh. Section one, which chapter four is essentially improvement requirements, and then section one is general requirements. So with with that in mind, the very last sentence or paragraph under this section. It previously had the red line text that you see here. We're suggesting that that changed to the green line text, and essentially what this says is that you can't develop at the end of a substandard road. Or you can't develop along a substandard road period if the substandard road is a single access. Uh road or a terminal um dead end road. Okay, what in your previous proposals, what came right after this in the same section? Was a number of subsections that um uh essentially modified this. Um restriction or or prohibition and said it can be waived under these circumstances. It got granular or detailed enough that it no longer fit what is a general requirement. So we actually flipped the page over um or at the very least flipped the section over to uh. Sec uh section two, which are required improvements. So these are all the different improvements that are required by um this section for subdivision when a subdivision is installed. And at the very end of this, we're adding a new subsection in. Which then contains all that information that you saw in your previous proposals. Um so substandard, single access, street or street route. In the memo that I send out to you guys, the revisions that you'll that I'll review with you here, um the difference between this and the memo that you have in your packet. Um doesn't change the three options that I've outlined in um in that memo. And to go over those three options, let's uh let's just review them really briefly. These are the three options that came out at the end of our um. Uh discussion with the county commission in in the uh planning commission joint. Uh work session with the Ogden Valley Planning Commission, the County Commission on um January fifth. Uh the three options were essentially, number one, and and these are all policy options. Number one. Leave the policy that you can't build along a terminal substandard road, or you can't develop along a terminal substandard road. Leave it alone. Um and what that'll do is it'll apply pressure to um. Uh landowners who are closer to um the the greater street network that isn't along a terminal. Um street to develop first and to improve the street and slowly the development will occur down that roadway. Um until it gets to the end uh so that the landowners at the end can uh develop. So that was policy. Option number one, and there are pros and cons to that. Obviously, the guy at the end of the road might not be able to develop for quite a few years. Um. And there was there, I there were a few planning commissioners, I think, who who suggested that. Um location is everything when it comes to real estate investment, and if you're at the end of the road, you should expect to. Pay quite a bit less money for that land because of the expense that it would cost to bring all the infrastructure to it. Um so that's that's an important consideration to make. Um option number two was to uh allow in certain circumstances. A waiver to the policy that suggests you can't build at the end of the terminal street. Uh substandard terminal street. And there were some um essentially some metrics or some uh benchmarks that the applicant would have to meet in order to earn that waiver. Uh one of them would be a professional study by a qualified transportation engineer that um results in a finding that the road is safe. As it is and can handle the amount of traffic that the developer is essentially going to be burdening the road with. Um that's opposite, but that's uh number one. And number two on that would be that the county engineer and the planning director can both mutually find. That it wouldn't be a violation of a general plan. It wouldn't be a violation of a of a street master plan. Um to allow that substandard road to continue to exist in the future. Um. And uh let's see that. Um that there are topographic, environmental, or other unique characteristics associated with the property, uh the developer's property. Um that would make it unlikely for a second road connection to exist in the area. No longer is essentially eliminating the the terminal nature of that street. Uh within the next ten years, which is in this subsection here. And then, and again, we'll go over these in detail momentarily. And then the the option number three was to. Try and create a little bit more of a comprehensive approach uh to to how this could unfold. So so maybe that's option three is. Can can be considered a compromise between you can't develop that uh along this street because it's terminal versus. Uh you can, and we're going to waive all the requirements and not put any financial obligation on you uh developer. And that uh option three is essentially that. Um we would take a a mathematical approach to calculating what it would cost to bring that road second segment from the point it becomes a terminal street. Or street route all the way to the uh the developer's land. We would take that and calculate the expense of improving that street, or at the very least. Create a cost estimate to improve the street with all of the street infrastructure that is required. We would then take that value and divide it by the width, the the minimum lot width of the zone. Essentially giving us a value of a per lot, uh a per lot value of what a street costs to build. And then we would take the number of lots that the developer's proposing and multiply that value by the number of lots. That would give us a financial value that the developer can invest in that existing substandard street. Um to improve it to a better standard. It might not be to existing standard or to adopted standards, excuse me. But to a better standard than it than it previously was. Maybe it's only twenty feet wide asphalt and we have a minimum requirement of thirty feet asphalt. Or maybe they throw that extra money into building shoulders or um improving uh drainage ditches or. Creating greater snow storage or purchasing um right of way. Or any of the above. It would give the county engineer the discretion to determine how that money is going to be spent. And the county engineer can either give the the developer the direction on how to improve the street or. At the county engineer's option can ask the developer to um uh invest that money into uh our. The county's road uh divisions um budget so that the county road division can program the those uh extra improvements into their. Um annual um. Maintenance program. So that that in essence is the um proposal, one, two, and three, uh then with three being the last one that I mentioned. Any questions before we dive into detail on 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 either of those? Okay, I'll go into detail, and if you have questions, just interrupt me. I'm more than happy to stop and back up a little bit. We need to. So in looking at the proposal to uh propose new language. My suggestion is, if if you like the way that the policy currently is, you still need to um. Give a recommendation to the county commission to amend the code, because the way the code is currently written is a little confusing, and it's kind of. Easy for a developer to to argue their way out of it, I think. If we were to change the language and be very specific about what we have to say, I think that would be in the county's best interest interest. So. Even if you like the way the county policy is, still recommend a change to this paragraph here. And this is what I have suggested here. Um the highlighted portion is what's in your packet, and then um after discussing a little bit more. Uh with the county engineer and others, we added uh an extra sentence. So it basically says. A new subdivision located along a street or street route that is at any point the single means of access from the subdivision to the greater interconnected public street. Networks shall not be approved unless the entire entirety of a single access street route is constructed to the county's public. Work standards and has the appropriate right of way with. To relieve this, the applicant may volunteer to improve the street or street route to current county standards by entering into a mutually agreeable. Development agreement with the county specifying the applicant's voluntary contributions. But basically, we can have a law that says. I'm sorry, you can't develop along this road because the road doesn't meet county standards. If we create a law that says you can't develop along this road unless you do these things, you you provide for these. Obligations or requirements. At the point we do that, we are actually, when we obligate a developer to do X, Y, or Z in a public right of way. We are exacting essentially. We are causing the developer, we're we're exacting the improvements from the developer to apply to the right of way. Whenever we do an exaction, we have to um ensure that whatever we ask the developer to do is um. Roughly proportionate um and reasonably related to the impact of the development on that street. For example, if a developer is going to be putting a couple of lots in at the end of a dead end road, we can't ask him to build the rebuild the whole road to a current standard. That to the tune of a few million bucks. We just can't do that. Um it's not roughly proportionate to the demand of two residential units on that street. Um. But we can tell that person who wants to put two lots at the end of the street. That the street's not built to standard, therefore it can't handle any more traffic, whether it be two or or one or ten. What we can do is we can allow the applicant to volunteer to make improvements. And so that's where the voluntary contribution would come in. That's where the the applicant would um contract with the county. Um and to to make those voluntary contributions. At that point, county's not exacting anything because the applicant is essentially donating something. Okay? And that is option number one in your memo. Option number two, and I I'm just gonna. Run through the language of this. If the if it's particularly boring, or Andrew, if you don't want me to read it word for word, just shout out and I'll uh. I'll I'll stop.
Now, Charlie, I I prefer it that way. Let's let's go through it so that we we can get to something with this.
Okay, great. So starting with um item P at the end of improvements that are required of a developer to install for a subdivision. The requirements of section one six four one H, which is the section we just read. And other requirements to the contrary in this section may be waived. If, and you've got two ifs here. And you have an and that joins these two ifs. So if this and if this, okay? If the county engineer and planning director can mutually make the following findings. Number one. That a traffic study conducted by a certified professional traffic operations engineer. And funded by the applicant demonstrates that the existing single access street or street route is adequate and safe. Or can be made adequate and safe with improvements, again, volunteered by the applicant for the increased traffic demand of the new subdivision. Um when we're talking about volunteer voluntary contributions here, essentially, this is where they're not improving the whole street to the full standard, but they're at least. Smoothing out the curve that's a dangerous safety issue. Um or putting in guard rail where there's a particularly deep um uh drainage trench um right by the road. Okay? Um. So again, county engineer and planning director can mutually make the following findings that due to topographic, environmental, or other unique characteristics of the area. It is unlikely that another street or street route will be established that provides the new subdivision. A second connection to the greater interconnected public street network within the next ten years. In making that determination, we're not just asking the um county engineer and the planning director to flip a coin. This is where we would look to the general plan and say, all right, what is planned for the area? And then we would also look to projections and developing patterns. And figure out, all right, does it seem likely that we're going to need a second access into this subdivision within the next ten years? So there can be objective findings that essentially sponsor or uphold the planning director and the county engineers. Uh determination there. Okay, part C, they've got to mutually make the finding that not providing the new subdivision with a standard single access street. Or street route does not conflict with applicable general plan, small area plan, master streets plan, or similar adopted planning document. And that not requiring a second connection to the greater interconnected public street node does not conflict with an applicable general plan, small area plan, master street plan. Or similar adopted document. Okay, so these are the findings that the planning director and the county director, or excuse me, the planning, yeah, county engineer and the planning director would need to make in order to allow. This waiver in the first place. Okay? And. In order for the waiver to exist. You've got another two options that we have down here. So if either of the following occur, and I want to show you where the or is. So your or is here, so either A occurs or B occurs, okay? So let's walk through A. Owners having interest in the new subdivision execute a substandard road agreement. And notice to new owners. This is essentially, it's usually the developer who executes it, but sometimes the developer is not the owner. So essentially, this is recorded covenant that runs with the land, and as that development, as that subdivision plot gets recorded and it. And and deeds are created to sell off each of those parcels, this uh agreement and notice will run with the land. The content of the substandard road agreement and notice shall be as specified by the county and at a minimum shall. Number one, explain that the new subdivision has only a single access, single street access. Connecting it to the greater interconnected public street network and that the single street access is not built to the minimum design and safety standards of the county. Two, require a a deferral agreement that specifies that the owner or successors and heirs are responsible. At a time that the governing authority, that may be the county, it might be a city in the future, never know. Deems it necessary for their roughly proportionate share of improving the parts of the single access street route that do not conform to county standards. Okay, part three, cause for the governing authority at their option. To withhold any written protests filed by the owner or their successors or heirs under the state codes uh assessment area act. Provisions for local districts or any similar government revenue generation mechanisms from the final tally of collected protests. Provided that the revenue. So this is a qualifier to the county doing this, provided the revenue generated by the mechanism is used to improve access to subdivision. Uh and then four, it needs to be recorded to the property at the time of the subdivision uh recordation or sooner. Any questions about those? That is essentially all of that, starting from where I highlighted all the way up to here. Is option number two in your memo. Any questions or comments before I move on to option number three? Okay? Option number three, let me uh. Okay. So let's just say that this road right here, actually, I'll tell you, this is, I'll tell you exactly where this is. This road right here is um nine hundred south or twelfth street. Um as it approaches Little Mountain out in this area. And then this road running uh north, south is seventy five hundred west. I'm picking on this one because it's an easy one. It's it's nice, straight, and uh there's a certain amount of homes along it that it's easy to count. Okay, seventy five hundred west, even though it kind of shows on the map here that it keeps going, it doesn't, it ends in a parking lot somewhere down in this area before you get to the. Bird refuge. So this is a terminal access street. It's also not built to county standard. It's built to better county standard than other terminal access streets, but not all the way to current county standards. So developer proposes right here in this polygon to put a hundred new lots in, okay? We know right now he's going to need to build this road that doesn't already exist, and that road is going to have to be built to full county standard, as are all the roads that are. Inside of the subdivision accessing those hundred new lots. But the question is, what financial um liability or obligation does the developer have? In improving this road from here where it becomes a single uh dead end road all the way to where the developer gets access from that road. So what you would do is you would take the length of that road um under option three, you would take the the length of the road at at eight thousand twenty feet. Let's see. So 8,020 feet and then you would. Calculate the cost to improve that street. Now, under the the new subsection, option number three that I'll read to you. The length to, or excuse me, the cost to improve that street. The that's going to be a little bit challenging to dial in the exact cost. But the the language does give the county engineer the option to require of the discretion to require the developer to essentially submit a complete design. From here to here of what it would take to improve the substandard road to county standard. And then from there, the engineers can calculate materials, labor, labor, and whatever other costs go into building a road. Or improving a road to current standard, itemize it. And we can come up with, we can get a cost estimate based on that. So just a rough calculation, 200 feet per linear foot to to rebuild this road to a county standard. Or improve the road to county standard. Okay, so we know the total street costs based on that is 1,604,000. The minimum lot width of the zone is 150 feet. So we know at full build out, when lots are at their minimum lot width, wall, wall, all the way down this road to here. The lot width being 150 feet each, we know. That when we run that calculation, we get that road costs about $10,700 per lot. Okay, now that calculation does also need to include. The new lots that the the developer is including. In in his subdivision as well, but what it doesn't include are potential branches that come off of this road, okay? And I suggest we don't include those because we just frankly don't know when they're going to occur, where they're going to occur. And we're trying to find the best way to be as fair as we can to the developer here. While also not leaving the taxpayers vulnerable to essentially funding the full recreation of this road. You apply the 10,700 per lot to each of the developers 100 new lots. The developer's obligation is 1,700, 1,070,000. So the developer would then. With the county engineer, using the. The new redesigned road or the road improvements that have been designed by the developer along this road segment here. To figure out exactly how that 1,070 will be applied. The developer saves about $500,000. That makes sense. It still won't be a fully compliant standard road, but at the very least. As new development comes in, the same obligation would apply until the road is built to a full standard. Okay, so if you're looking at two lots, you're going to be looking at a little over 20,000. Okay, unless there's any other questions, I'm going to just go through the language with you. Now remember the or right here, this is either A or B. The option would go in favor of the developer, developer would choose which one they would go with. Okay, part B, the applicant funds certain street improvements and if applicable, street right of way acquisition along the single access street route. The improvements required shall be as designated by the county engineer and have an estimated cost that is roughly proportionate to the impact of the subdivision's new lots. On the street system. This cost shall be determined by estimating the full cost to improve the single access route, street route or or excuse me. Yeah, single access street route to current county standards. Dividing the cost by the future build out along the street, then multiplying that number by the applicant's number of lots. The county engineer may require the applicant to furnish engineered drawings of the street and an itemized cost estimate in order to substantiate the estimated cost. The county engineer has the discretion to either require this cost to be deposited with county for the county to do the work. Or require the applicant to do the work. The following provides additional criteria for this cost calculation. Number one, the length of the single access street route shall be measured from the point it becomes a single access street route. To the furthest extent of the applicant subdivision. Now, if the applicant has a subdivision that fronts on that street, you would go to the last lot along that street. In the example that I that we just looked at, the applicant, his burden on that street ends where. His subdivision kind of peels off and with the new street that he created. And so his burden in or in providing for this calculation would end at that point too. Okay, number two, the cost to improve this length shall be estimated using up to date market costs for construction material, labor, and any other expense necessary. To bring the street to county standards. The added expense of an intersection or other street component that is not related to providing a standard street to the applicant's subdivision. Shall be excluded from the calculation. So let's say we know a development's coming in somewhere. In this area and we know that there is a intersection that's going to locate maybe right around in this area. Or has already located in this area. Requiring the applicant to provide improvements to this intersection. For the sake of cross traffic to this development and that development is not reasonably related or roughly related to the. Demand of these new lot owners along this. And so essentially, you wouldn't require the the added expenses at a subdivision to be applied to this just the linear. Through length through that subdivision. Okay, future build out along the street shall be determined by dividing the length of the street by the minimum lot width of the zone. Then adding the applicant's lots that were not already included if applicable. Alternative lot widths or flag lots as may be allowed by this land use code shall not be used for this calculation. So what that means is. The the developer can't come back and say, well, in a lot average subdivision. We get half the amount of width and so we, I want to calculate it that way or in a cluster subdivision, we can get significantly reduced width. We want to calculate that way. We would have to, this says we fall back to what the minimum. Lot development standard is, the lot width in this listed in the zone. Okay, the county engineer has a discretion to adjust the cost estimate for inflation or market fluctuations during the duration of construction of the subdivision. So for example, as the subdivider, you know, if it takes five, 10, 15 years for the developer to actually get. His subdivision done at some point in time, that that value of investment in that street should go up. If they, if he hasn't already executed it. And then five, a subdivision improvement that is required by this land use code regardless of the condition of the single access street shall not be included in this calculation. So. If we, for example, if it's, if the developer has a certain number of lots that are fronting the substandard street. We would already require the developer to invest and bring that frontage, at least his half of that street. Up to county standards, including curb, gutter sidewalk, if we require that in that area. The additional asphalt with drainage facilities, et cetera. Doing this calculation would not exclude his financial obligation to install that along his frontage. So this would just go, essentially, it would it would go from where he's got to install that back to where the terminal street starts. That's it. Any questions, comments, discussion?
I have a question, Charlie. So how does this apply to someone who owns property? And either has determined that they can't develop it because of the infrastructure cost. Or, you know, for what, for any reason that that they've they've wanted to develop, but they haven't been able to. And they decide to start parting off one lot at a time. So how, how does this work in that kind of a situation? Because, I mean, it could be for family, which, okay, maybe there's some exclusions for that. But it could also be that it looks like it's going to be for family and it's really not.
Right? Well, and at the end of the day, it's not going to be for family down the road, right? Because.
Forever, yeah.
Will pass on and and it's going to be sold at some point. I shouldn't say never, never say never, right? Maybe it'll stay in the family forever. But we we never know. So, yeah, we've got a plan for that. So are you are you saying policy option number three? How would that be applied or how should that be applied?
Well, in order for someone to be able to not have to improve the road. You know, to or or the only way that they could, they could have a lot or two on their property, say they, you know, that person owns maybe 10 or 20 acres. And we'll just go the family route and they have a son or a daughter who who wants a building lot there. And they determine that they're going to, you know, subdivide, so it has to go through the process of a subdivision. But but in in essence, and and correct me where I'm wrong here, because maybe I'm not seeing the bigger picture. But it's, but in essence, it's saying that any subdivision would have to improve that road. So for, you know, for this type of a subdivision to happen. What, how does, how does, how does, how do, how do we allow for that to happen? Let's just put it plainly like that.
Fair enough. So if we had option two and option three available. We would look to the the landowner to decide how he or she wants to do it as they're dividing. Now, if you have one lot and you want to divide that into two lots where your one lot already has a house on it. We know that the whole point of this is to provide improvements to the street infrastructure as new demand comes online. So your existing home on lot one is not going to create any greater demand on the street infrastructure. So we wouldn't be able to require any, require any more improvements other than improving the lot width of that particular lot. On lot two, where a new home could be located, that would create an additional demand. So let's start with the option three, just coming back to this calculation here.
Hey, Charlie?
Yes.
Real quick, just there was a comment brought up on there. Is there people waiting in the waiting room to get into this meeting? There was just a chat Greg put on there that there were some people or something that wanted to get in or something.
I don't see any, but that doesn't mean they're not there, hang on. Might have to stop sharing my screen.
Well, and they may have jumped off. I got a text saying, asking if the meeting started because all they're seeing is that it's waiting for hosts.
If, if you want to text them back and tell them to jump back on, we'll, I'll make sure they're on.
Sorry to cut you off.
No, no worries. Can you guys still see the the image right here?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop sharing for just a second, just to check. Okay, looks like they're not on yet, but as soon as. It's the hard part of presenting and hosting at the same time, right? So Commissioner or Chair Favero, the. I'll give you the direct answer, the. Most equitable answer, and then I'll I'll give you the answer that's tends to be a little different and a little more favorable for people who already live in the area. The direct answer is that every new home creates a demand and that demand can actually be calculated mathematically. On average, in the United States. The average single family residence creates 10 vehicle trips per day. One vehicle trip is leaving, another vehicle trip is coming back. So just going to work is two. If you've got two cars that leave at least once a day, there's four. And most households do a total of 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 five round trips, 10 Out and Backs. That is how you can calculate your traffic demand. Now granted, maybe it's a little old lady who doesn't even have a car who's moving in. We just can't, we can't calculate for those circumstances or those externalities. The easiest way to calculate is just to take it as an average, because you never know who's going to live there in the future. With that in mind, every new home or every new lot has a potential burden. And that burden can be. Determined from this formula, if we did apply the formula, it would just essentially, their burden would be $10,700 for their new lot. If it's a two lot subdivision with one of the lots already having a home on it. That $10,000 could, I would probably suggest that go into the county roads fund. So that the county road division can take that $10,000 and do what they need to add a little bit of asphalt or or whatever it is. That that $10,000 can do. And as that, as more one lot subdivisions come in. At some point in time, the value of investment in that road is going to be your 1,070 or greater. So you could either get the 1,070 with 100 new lots. Or you can get the 1,070 with 100 one lot subdivisions. Does that make sense?
It does.
Now that the answer that I think is a little more favorable to people who have who have lived in the area and who have always wanted to divide off parts of the property for family. The politically savvy answer is a little different. I just don't know how to write an ordinance that says if you're. An ordinance that meets the equal protection clause that says if you're a longstanding. Family farmer of Western Weber area, you don't have to pay your proportionate share of your impact on the on the public infrastructure. But we could always try, we could work with Matt Wilson and and see if we can find a way to write that ordinance if that would be more desirable. That makes sense.
It does. You've you've answered my question. It's 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 basically the same, whether it's one lot or 10 or 20 or 100. So that's, that answers my question. Anybody else have anything for Charlie while we're, while we've got him all revved up on this thing?
Got me riled up.
Yeah.
I'll make a quick comment. Charlie, this is, this is a complex issue.
Oh, yeah.
And and I, I'm sorry that you have to go through all this. The the thing that is frustrating to me is the more complex it gets. The easier it is to find loopholes and to find excuses and options out, so. It has to be ironclad. And part of my concern is. The real burden, it lands on the developer. The developer who wants to put in that subdivision, if there's a substandard road. The burden should land on him. And then the only place where I can think of where somebody else should pay their so-called fair share. Is if at some point they too want to develop their land. And then they would benefit off of that improved road, right?
Right.
But if there's a, you know, we're in A1 zone and there's a bunch of one acre lots along that unimproved road. Now you have a bunch of people who will never benefit from developing their lots. That have to pay $10,000 for a developer who wants to build a road. And I don't, I don't see how that can be fair. So that's where I'm struggling with it, is I don't see how we can. We can do it without imposing an unfair burden on an unexpected landowner, simply because the developer wants to build some land. Build some homes. So I'm struggling.
When you, when you refer to an unsuspecting landowner. Are you talking about a landowner who wants to divide off one lot for their kids or are you talking about somebody who's on a lot that already exists there?
I'm talking about somebody who already. Lives there and has a lot like a one acre lot that can't be subdivided.
Got it. So in those cases, these options would not apply. So we're figuring out what the proportionate share is of the new lots. That only gives us, so 100 new lots, that only gives us 1,070,000 to work with when we know the total cost to improve that street. Is 1,600,000. So that additional $500,000 through 10,700 per existing lot isn't going to be applied. Essentially, that the delta, the difference there, the $500,000 would need to be essentially coughed up in the future at some point. By the county, by the taxpayer. Which seems fair to me just because the taxpayer payers at large will eventually benefit from the existence of this road.
And I I want to build on Commissioner Bell's comment if I can. I agree with you 100% Commissioner Bell. I mean, if if you look at any other utility, they're going to make that developer bear that cost of upsizing or or making that. You know, waterline or or other infrastructure fit to make that development work. So I agree with you 100%. I, they're not going to come back and make every other, you know, individual along there. That's why I'm leaning towards option one. That's why I'm leaning towards option one. Um, I, I think that the way that it's written right now with, with still giving a developer the chance. If he chooses to come in and, and upgrade that facility at his cost. You know, and, and still giving them the chance to put a pioneering agreement or something on it to recoup their costs through a development agreement or, or however. You know, it works. I, I, I don't want to see that burden come back on, on, you know, they're making the change to the system. From the way it currently is today through their development, and, and I think Commissioner Wickern said it in the, in the pre-meeting. You know, i- it all goes back to the, the property that's being developed, you know, through organic growth and, and, you know. I, you know, you look at this in certain areas and it's gonna be dictated and, and driven by, you know. I, I don't think you're gonna see this issue come on Seventy Five Hundred West, because the infrastructure's not there to make it. Um, you know. Yeah, one hundred percent the sewer. I mean, they couldn't put a hundred lots out there and, and make it work without having, you know, a ton of other infrastructure costs. So I think the infrastructure costs outside of the roads are gonna help. Drive this as well.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, um, Commissioner Edwards. In fact, the, I think the best way to look at a road and, and the least complicated way to look at a road. Is to see it as a utility that has a finite capacity, because roads do have finite capacity. Um, it's, it's hard to conceptualize it that way. Um, but I mean, the traffic engineers, the transportation engineers will tell you what, uh, based on road width and, and design. How much traffic flow, uh, a road can handle. The challenge behind that is most people who demand a traffic study, because they want to know that they're not gonna be impacted by a new development. Are sorely, um, confronted with the reality that as long as you got free flow, even if you have car after car. As long as you got free flow, you've still got a functioning road, um, with the exception of wait times. That's basically how you got calculated. It's how long do you have to wait to pull out onto the road? So, but yeah, it's, it's a great way to essentially simplify it, because if this was a pipe. I mean, and it's, and it's at full capacity and we can't fit anymore. Yeah, there's gonna need to be another pipe installed, or the, the smaller pipe pulled out and the new pipe put in.
Yes, thank you, uh, Commissioner Edwards. That's exactly kind of where my thoughts were headed. I, I just don't see, um. How it's, how it's fair to impose that cost of that utility, essentially the road, on, on everybody else who is just fine leaving it the way it is, so, thanks.
I got a question, Charlie.
You first, Wayne.
Uh, that, if a developer goes in and brings out code up to code. That, doesn't that increase the value of the land of all the people that live around there?
That's a great question, and the answer is yes. Um, we were just discussing this, uh, yesterday. Um, the developer goes in, installs a road that meets current standards. The cost to improve the road to any of the existing lot owners who live down that area. Is no longer going to be there when they want to subdivide their land for their children or anyone else, because the developer bore that cost. So supposing there is not a development agreement or a pioneering agreement. And the developer just volunteers to put it in so that he can benefit from his one hundred lot subdivision, or fifty, or whatever it may be. Now everyone along that roadway has less financial liability when they want to develop. So yes, it, it does benefit them.
Charlie, it, it is important to consider though, that if you own land, only enough land that's zoned for one lot, you cannot subdivide. Then you're actually just paying more taxes to live the way you've always lived and have more traffic on your street. Now your land is more valuable if you leave your home, but for those people who aren't land-rich, who just have enough land for their own home. They're actually in a worse-off situation.
Yeah.
Um, it's something to consider.
Absolutely.
The other things I just wanted to bring up, I brought up a lot at the pre-meeting, but just having been involved with the schools. Um, you add eight thousand extra feet of where a school bus needs to go, that is a lot of money that comes out of the, the school system. Now, if there are children and homes paying taxes all along that street, it balances out. But when you develop one lot way far away, that takes a lot of money away from other, other schoolchildren. And even though the developer will bear the cost of building the road, they're not on the hook for maintaining that road or removing the snow from that road. So if we have a thousand people on that eight thousand square foot stretch of road, then we gain enough taxes that we could probably lower the tax burden. But even if the developer pays for that road to be put, placed, that. You know, the cost of the installation of the road, we still may be increasing the tax burden. Um, because a hundred lots may not just fill in how much we need.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, if you were to look at the financial benefit versus detriment, the cost-benefit analysis of. Single-family red, primary occupant, uh, single-family residences. Um, the tax liability will never pay for the infrastructure. Um, it, it's, it's a net drain, and, and if that was the only thing that a community had was residential development. Uh, their, their general fund is gonna be in the negative very quickly. Um, that's the whole, whole reason why all the cities are, are fighting each other for commercial and, and retail oper- uh, operations. So they can get the benefit of a different type of tax. Um, or in the Ogden Valley, um, you know, you've got a lot of vacant, uh, recreational homes that can be taxed at a hundred percent value. It's a great point.
You know, as was mentioned, it is, this is very complex and, and it affects people differently depending on, on their ownership or potential ownership. And, and. I, I don't want to see the options taken away, because somebody might be able to make that work. Um, as far as, you know, uh. I, I, I do like the organic growth better. I think it just makes more sense. It keeps the growth moving from the point of growth out, instead of, you know, hopscotching to different areas. But at the same time, if somebody, you know, I, I hate to take away anyone's right to develop. If, if they feel like they can make something work, i- if they can, um. Pay for the cost of, of improving all of the infrastructure, uh, in order to do it. By whatever means, you know, by the means that have been kind of outlined in, i- i- in what you've got here. That, I, I'm still really kind of on the fence with all of it, other than I, I really don't. I don't care for the, the tax district, other than the way that it spreads the cost out. Other than that, I really don't like the way that it works.
I got one more comment. You know, I, I, first of all, I don't, I don't think that we're taking anybody's. Rights away. I mean, uh, there's a risk development. And, uh, if they choose to develop at the end of a road, I guess that's their risk. They either have to put in the infrastructure or wait. They still have their rights. So I don't think that we're necessarily taking any rights away. But the other thing that I wanted to make a comment on is that risk li- lies solely with the. Developer anyway. And if he has an availability through a development agreement to go and seek some kind of way to get. Paid back for that, I don't think option one takes that from him. So, um, he just has to find a, a creative way to get, get paid back and, and they have lots of creative ways to do that. So I don't really, I kind of think that option one's the best solution.
I've got another comment, Charlie.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that, that, this in my mind is a problem with a hundred and fifty foot lot frontages.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I think that, uh, you know, they're, 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 they're just too big. And I think that, uh, one, one of the problems is, is because of the escalating costs of making roads and interstruction. Interstructure is just gonna keep going up, at least for the near future. That, you know, smaller lots would make more sense, because you have the ability to spread that cost over more lots.
Yep.
So, you know, that, that's just a comment. I know that, you know, a hundred and fifty foot lot out here in Warren, uh. When I turn about eighty-five years old, I'll wish it's about twenty feet. And so, uh, you know.
Especially when you need to spell the driveway or the sidewalks out there.
Yeah, exactly. So, you, you know, I, you, you know, in, in, in the future of this thing, you know. I, I really don't see a hundred and fifty foot lots. I see smaller kind of lots, and part of it is, is, you know, it crunches down your, uh, utilities. Uh, could make, uh, more revenue per foot of road, et cetera, et cetera. So anyway, ju- just for what that's worth, and, uh, I, I know that we're, uh, still rural and I'm all okay with that. But, uh, it was a lot more rural, rural out here fifty years ago. And so, uh, development's gonna come. I think smaller lots are gonna come with it, so I'm done. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Um, and when you're thinking about clustering, sometimes when you cluster a subdivision, you, you get less road length. Unless you gotta build that extra road to get to the next cluster subdivision. And so even then, I mean, you may get a little bit less asphalt and utility line, length in there. But, uh, to, to fill that network out, to reach all of the pieces of property that could potentially cluster. Um, you're right, it, it, I mean, it still extends that out and branches it out. So, um, it does help to have, uh, a higher density in the area, because then you've got more to share the load. Not that I'm advocating for density in the rural area, I'll make that pretty clear.
I got a comment. I'm leaning kind of towards number one also, but I think maybe we could. Review it once the study's been done for Western Weber.
Thank you. I think that's beneficial. I did want to make sure everyone was, uh, aware. I, I don't, didn't mention it in the pre-meeting. Um, the county commission wants to move on this, uh, pretty quick. Uh, my understanding is, uh, a week from today. And so they are asking for a thumbs up or thumbs down, a, a vote one way or the other. And so if the majority wants to see option one be recommended to the county commission, um, with all the appropriate findings. Feel free to make that, and, uh, we'll, we'll do that in front of county commission.
Well, Chair, I'm ready to make a motion if you're willing to accept one.
Uh, uh, I thank you, Commissioner Bell. I was, I was just heading that direction myself. Um, uh, is there any more questions for Charlie before we move on to a motion? Seeing none, Commissioner Bell, floor is yours.
So I'll make a, a motion that we, uh, recommend option one to the county commission. And Charlie, you're gonna have to help me with the appropriate findings. I don't have, looking at the agenda, I don't have. It's not clear to me.
Uh, no worries. So as far as the findings go, um, there's a whole hoax or a whole range that you can go with. But we've talked about hopscotch development and the cost of that, talked about, um, providing for organic growth.
So mine would be providing for organic growth and, and, uh, and in, in compliance with the general plan and pending the general plan update.
Perfect.
I have a motion. Have a motion in a second. I think we'll do a roll call on this. Um, I apologize. Now I've got to get my roster out so I can see who we all are. A short memory.
Chair, if I can just add in maybe a memo to pass on to the commissioners with this, you know. Just to reiterate the fact that, you know, this is, this is what we'd like to see now. But once the transportation master plan's done, when the new general plan is updated, you know, we're not opposed to looking at this again. But given what we have, you know, currently and, and not, you know, a real decent transportation master plan for the area. This is why we feel so strongly with option one.
And, and I agree with that. I, I, uh, I think that it, it also should be looked at, and I don't know, is, is that something? Do we, uh, do we want to modify the, uh, the motion to that end, or is, is, has that passed us? Are you against that, Commissioner Bell?
No, I'm okay with that. We can add that to the motion.
Can you tell me who's second to motion?
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have amended that motion, uh, to add to it. Um, that this would be looked again after the general plan completion. And I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, Commissioner Bell, is, are you in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay, um, so having, having revised that motion, I, I will ask for a second again.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Have Commissioner Edwards do it.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards, second the motion, we'll do a roll call. Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Wickern.
Aye.
Commissioner Bell.
Aye.
Commissioner Nielsen.
Aye.
Commissioner Andriotti.
I read his lips. It looked like he said aye.
Are we good to go with that, Commissioner Andriotti?
Aye.
And the chair, and the chair votes aye as well. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. I think we had some good discussion on that.
Chair, I think Commissioner McCormick's on with us.
As long as it's passed, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good heavens. I apologize, Commissioner McCormick. We're, we're gonna, we want to include you in this.
Aye.
Very good. Now it passes unanimously. Sorry about that, Commissioner. Okay.
First week, you know, we got some trial and errors going on here.
Rookie mistake, rookie mistake. Okay, moving on to item number four, public comment for items not on the agenda. We do have, uh, some participation from the public. Anybody wanna? Uh, uh, say something or have anything to say?
Commissioner Favero?
Yes.
I'd like to take and make a comment, uh. Concerning the, particularly the subdivisions codes. And the way the green space is currently being looked at. Uh, whether it's green space or open space, whatever we want to call it. One of the concerns that, that I have in, in the area, having talked with several developers. It has to do with water rights and the water rights attached to the open space and the green space. Uh, the county currently requires that they provide both culinary and secondary water. To the apartment, to the lots in the subdivision. But there is nothing in the code that says they have to provide any water. If they want to maintain the open space and have it green. And that, um, checking with. Particularly the Hooper Irrigation Company, which provides the secondary water for the Western Weber County area in the. Primarily Taylor area. The Hooper. Uh, ordinances require that the developer provide water for the total development, including the green space. And it's written into their code in a one-sentence line. That they provide water for the space. In checking with some of the other codes around there, they say, well, if it has been previously irrigated. Then it needs to have water provided to the area. But my perspective is, I would like you to consider. Attaching water to the open space where it has been previously irrigated. Either that or provide some way for the dust mitigation of those areas. Because if there is no water. Or if the developer is passing the responsibility to provide the water back to the people he's leasing the land to. Uh, there, then you need to provide something for dust mitigation. Uh, there, because it will turn into nothing but alkali and dust bowls, uh, if there isn't water. So I, I would ask that you work with Charlie and. So I I would ask that you work with Charlie and looking at just putting in the sentences that where land has been previously irrigated, that it also include water. Thank you.
Roger, just for the record, can you give us your your name and address, please?
Yes, Roger Heslop, sixteen fifty-seven South, forty-seven hundred West, Ogden eight-four-four oh one.
We also have somebody in the audience that would like to speak to the substandard roads.
Okay, that this I I don't have a problem with it. Yeah, I hope as long as they understand that the motion has passed.
Just had a question on how does this affect current subdivision applications on a substandard road?
Charlie or Rick, I'm gonna let you guys field that.
Zach Price.
So am I echoing? Charlie, why don't you talk because I'm echoing down here?
Oh, I actually, I think I was the one echoing you. We both said so at the same time.
So we would fall under the existing ordinance that we have in place because you're vested under the existing ordinance and that's what you would fall under.
Cause I was told to file a deferral agreement and my process would go through still. And they get a call last week saying we shut down until the road is brought back to standard.
So per our ordinance, a deferral agreement is not a provision that's allowed in the current ordinance. That would be something if the planning commission chose to consider that as part of their motion this evening, then that could be something that could be looked at. And they've just given a recommendation to the county commission and so their recommendation is just forwarded on to the county commission. So whatever they recommended tonight's not a formal decision. The formal decision is made at the county commission meeting. And I believe, Charlie, do we have a date set for that?
I was gonna chat with you a little bit. We had discussed a week from today. We may want a work session with the county commission before we do so in tandem with the engineering division to kind of flesh out a couple of ideas that came up today. And their work session, their next work session next Monday is a holiday, so we may want to go a couple of weeks out.
Okay, so what you'd want to do on this, Mr. Price, is you'd want to stay on the county website and find out when the next meeting is that the county commission will be hearing this. They will have a public hearing most likely for that, and so you'd be able to voice your concerns at that time.
Well, I was supposed to come in last Wednesday and find and go through all this with my application. And then it got shut down that Monday because of this ordinance that was gonna be brought up.
It wasn't necessarily because of this ordinance.
That's what I was told.
This ordinance could help you, but it's our existing code that doesn't allow for a substandard road agreement.
I got a comment. Can't Mr. Price go in for a variance?
Unfortunately, a variance is not an option for this type of situation. It would require an actual text amendment for for this to happen. But that would be awesome if we could do that, but that's not an option under our ordinance.
Cause I went through everything and had a meeting with Felix and all of them and was told to just sign the deferral paperwork of a new, cause I signed one years ago. And we defer, we already deeded our land over for a future road. And if I did the deferral paperwork that they would process my subdivision application and then this came through saying that I couldn't develop on my road until this was done.
Yeah, our legal division does not allow for that.
Why was I told that? And that's
Yeah, I apologize for whatever was mentioned to you about that, but our ordinance doesn't allow for that.
Alright, so when the development comes down my road, am I responsible for that or would I don't wanna say name of you, but would he be responsible for his two hundred and five lots?
So you'd be responsible for what's in front of your property and then as far as getting the road to your situation that
I'm already on the road.
That that would benefit you because right now the road is substandard, so that's something that you'd have to work out legally with whoever's developing that.
Why are we as property owners on the road, we're liable for the price of the road where he's wanting to bring in two hundred lots?
That you we'd be looking at what's your proportionate cost.
But why am I responsible for any of it is what?
Because right now you're on a substandard road and all development has to be developed on off of a standard road.
Even is the property owner already, if we owned a house on that road, we're still required for that?
Correct, yeah.
I don't understand why we're
Only if you're developing. If you're not developing, you're not responsible for that. But if you're wanting to subdivide, then you are. And I should have asked Chair Fabaro, are you okay with me explaining this? You know, typically, you know, that that's something that you're you're in charge of the meeting. And so if you want me to continue explaining this to this gentleman, I'd be glad to, but you know, that's that's up to you, Chair.
I think that this conversation's probably best suited for in-person, one-on-one in a conference room versus or on a Zoom meeting however however it needs to be done versus this meeting. It seems like there's a lot of detail that needs to be gone through and and I think it would be prudent to move move that to to that sort of a meeting. So I apologize for any inconvenience of that, but I think that would be the best way to to handle this.
Okay, so please come into our planning office and we can visit more about that or call us or we set up a Zoom meeting as well.
Thank you. Also, I wanted to add that we had another member of the public that didn't have access to a microphone, Lance Peterson. Thirty-eight eighty-one West, twenty-five fifty South, who who was in favor of the comments that Mr. Heslop made as well. Having said that, is there any other comments from the public on items not on tonight's agenda? Okay, then I will move on to the next item. Planning Commissioner remarks. Does anybody have any remarks tonight?
I have a I have a question. Maybe if we can go back to Roger Heslop's comment. Am I to understand that even if we create open spaces agricultural preservation on some of these cluster subdivisions? That whoever farms that property won't have water enough to irrigate it?
I I think there's the potential for that, definitely.
Well, how do we how do we remedy that? Because I see that as a huge problem. How do we? How do we encourage a developer to give land over as a park, for example, if they can't ever water the park?
I think there are a lot of issues even beyond the water with our subdivision code that would be good to put on our agenda at the next meeting. I know I had talked to to Rick about some ideas, just my experience with with PRUDs and some worries and concerns I had with the current setup.
Commissioner Edwards, did I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just I just don't know the the appropriate process to remedy that. Is there a way that we can open that code and readdress how we get water to these open spaces and 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 other concerns like Commissioner Wickern brought up? If she has some issues with the PRUD, what is their appropriate process to open those up and 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 discuss those among the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna I'm gonna go ahead and let the Director Grover answer that. You're you're muted, Rick.
So so we are looking at our culinary and secondary water ordinance. And we were planning on having a joint work session on that this last meeting. We're going to be looking at that probably at the first combined, we'll have another combined meeting at the start of March. And we could look at that at that time as well. Because part of that is also looking at how many or do we require actual water? How many water shares do we require per household? And how much do we require for secondary water purposes as well? And we could talk about that at that time. But as far as, you know, getting an item to be discussed, you can you can ask us to look into those things that you'd like to have ordinance changes and then we would visit with the county commission. And and see what reaches their priority list based upon what our work schedule is and what we have going on. And then we would prioritize that. One thing that we have prioritized heavily right now is the Western Weaver General Plan, which is looking at above and beyond these things, but we would also be looking at that as part of the general plan. The subdivision ordinance, I know, is an important part of that and we would look at that as part of this as well and so but typically you would give us direction and then we would take that to the county commission and then they would give us input and direction on what they would like to see based upon the workload.
You know, one comment to the the water for the open spaces in in other parts of the unincorporated county. You know, there are areas that that will eventually be subdivided and maybe in into some degree even at this point now that there is not water for those parcels. There wasn't water there to begin with for those parcels. And and so that's kind of a tricky item to attack and and maybe maybe attack's not the right word, but but there are there are circumstances where where there may not be water available. Over here in the Taylor area, there's probably less of of that, but in parts of West Weaver, Warren and West Warren. I I'm almost sure that there are areas that that have never seen irrigation water that could potentially become open space.
Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
I I think there's, I totally agree. We need to look at this. I think it's an issue. But I think that I think that what you bring up is a great point, but I think there's ways in that code. We just need to state, I think. I think Mr. Heslop brought it up in one of them other codes that he set up of a surrounding city that stated if if it had previously been irrigated property, then you know, it needs to maintain that. And I think that's a way that we can kind of remedy that issue. Cause I agree, there's some property out there that has never seen water and probably never will unless you build a home on it and put a yard around it. And and I think that's, you know, through the through some verbiage in that code, we can hopefully dictate that in in a certain area.
The water, specifically the secondary water, has been a concern of mine for a long time and I it definitely needs to be addressed. And to Director Grover's point, I think we just haven't had that opportunity yet. So I think we're gonna get there. Any other comments?
Sorry, it's Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Fabaro. You guys probably have a little more experience with this, but on those lands that you you using as example, maybe out in Warren, West Warren that never been irrigated. If a developer comes along and wants to put, let's say, a cluster out there and create agricultural preservation lots, shouldn't they still somehow have to provide irrigation, not only to the homes, but also to that agricultural preserve preserve lot? I I yes and no is my thoughts on that one. You know, there's there's just some areas that, you know, that even if you provide water and try and plant grass, it's probably not gonna grow. You know, some of the soil types and some of the stuff that we have out there, I don't think water is is a fix to it and and but do I think that, yes, they need to provide secondary water to the houses? For sure. I I think that's a huge issue we have in this western part of the county and 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 to to build on that with, you know, Director Grover's comments and that, I think we really need to focus on that work session and and we, when we do hold this work session, I would just recommend that we invite the the district managers from West Warren Water, from Taylor West Weaver Water, because it directly affects our water managers and and our tailor or in our culinary water service providers, because right now we're basically putting the burden on them to make sure that these secondary systems work. And, you know, a- as a taxpaying citizen or a even a consumer to these water districts, I'm not paying Taylor West Weaver to to manage a secondary system. I'm paying them to provide me with drinking water. And and I don't agree that, you know, the way this code makes it require them to make this work or make a secondary system work or be the the bad guy in a in a development that says, you know, okay, if this secondary system don't work, we're not gonna provide you with culinary water, then you know, they're the bad guy because the county's already issued the building permit and the the homeowner's ready to move in. So I I really think we need to look at this and focus on this water issue out here.
Chair Fabaro, if I could just jump in. I just wanna remind the commission that this has been noticed as public comment. If there's issues that you do want to bring before the planning commission, I'd recommend having those noticed and then you can have those discussions.
Okay, very good. With that, we'll move on from that subject. Is there any other subject matter that you guys would like to discuss or bring up?
I just want a clarification from Mr. Wilson. This is Commissioner comments and we're just bringing up issues that we want to see in future meetings. We're not really dictating. Is that wrong?
Well, you're not specific in your commissioner comments. Generally, your commissioner comments are gonna be related to probably things that have been noticed on the agenda. You I mean, if you're wanting something on future agenda, you can do that. You can say, this is something I'd like to discuss rather than discussing it. This has gone further than just saying this is an item I want to discuss. So.
Okay, then to your point, I would like to discuss as well beyond just the water to agriculture preserves, whether we even allow cluster subdivision in areas where we can't get water to them. So that would have to be something we also discuss in one of those those meetings.
Noted. Director Grover, i- is this is this gonna come back up our secondary water conversation soon?
Yeah, we're, like I mentioned, we're hoping to have that on our first work session meeting in March, so it'll be the first Tuesday of March. And, you know, when you do ask us to bring certain things up, like I mentioned, we will take it to the county commission. We'll get their input and make sure that's something that they that we have time to do at this particular time.
Okay, very good. Everybody comfortable with that now? All right, moving on. Any other comments or remarks? Okay, Director Grover.
Charlie, have you, I'm s- I want to apologize. I had interviews, so I wasn't able to be in the pre-meeting and that, but Charlie, have you updated the planning commission on the general plan?
No, not yet. I I figured we'd do it at this time. Do you want me to do it or would you like to do it?
I I can easily do it. It won't take very long. What we're doing right now is internally, we're gonna be meeting with the consultant and we're gonna be having them meet with other stakeholders in the general plan such as the health department, the engineering division, other utility providers that could be impacted through the general plan and get their input. And then what we're wanting to do is have a kickoff meeting just with you planning commissioners first and kind of give you the scope of work and where we're at on that. And that will be in our next planning commission meeting. And we'll have the consultant there and they will be giving input and taking your feedback at that time. And we'll kind of give you a timeline of where everything is gonna be happening. And that's all I have.
Right. Mr. Wilson? Any comments?
No comments. Thank you.
Made all the comments you want to?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Removed.
I second. Do we need a second?
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We're in adjournment. Thank you very much.
Thanks, you guys. See ya.